August the 16th, and we know we have many council members who are remote. For those of you who are wondering why we have such an empty dais, it's not because folks aren't working, it's because they're working from afar. So I'll ask Toni, if she can please call the roll.
Okay, Jimenez?
Here.
Cohen? Carrasco?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Esparza? Arenas? Foley? Mahan? Jones?
Present.
Licardo?
Present.
You have a form.
Okay. Please stand if you're able and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America, into the public, religious stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
All right, today's invocation will be provided by the Khmer Krom Buddhist monks. We are honored to have them with us today. And Councilmember Esparza, if you can hear us, I think you're going to tell us more, is that right?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Apologies for not being able to be there in person. But today, we are honored to have the Khmer Krom Buddhist monks from the United Khmer Krom Nonprofit Organization, which is also known as the Kamara Rangzi Temple. And I'd like to welcome the venerable Ratana Young, the venerable Sopanrit Khan, the venerable Vasnapal, and the venerable Rian Son, who will be giving a traditional blessing for good health, success, and peace to all in the Pali language of Therapada Buddhism. The Kamara Rangzi Temple was founded in 2002 by volunteers, and their mission is to preserve and promote Khmer identity and culture here in San Jose. In addition to conducting religious services, the Khmer Krom Buddhist monks teach meditation, perform community services, such as blessing newlywed couples, those who are ill, I think I could use a blessing, and perform funeral services. The temple also holds Khmer language classes for both children and adults, and hosts a wide variety of community events throughout the year, and serves as a cornerstone for our Cambodian community here in San Jose. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is the venerable Ratana Young. On behalf of the Khmer Krom Buddhist monk at Kamara Rangzi Temple, we would like to conduct a Buddhist chanting to bless a successful meeting and peace to all.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for joining us today. Thank you, gentlemen, for your services also to our community. All right, we're on to orders of the day. Does anyone in the council have any changes to the printed agenda? If not, we don't need a motion. I'm going to rely on Toni or Grace to check the Zoom because my computers are working very well.
No hands.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move forward then to the closed session report. Nora?
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have a report out of closed session today.
Okay, we're on to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled from consent? Going first to my colleagues here on the dais.
Mayor, this is Councilmember Carrasco. We have ceremonial.
Oh, we sure do. How about that? Thank you. Sorry, my old age, I'm skipping a lot of items these days.
Then this day is just for you, Mayor.
Okay. You're absolutely right. Thank you, Councilmember Carrasco, for reminding me. Today, for those of us who have memory issues, the National Senior Citizens Day, we're going to recognize and proclaim it, and Councilmember Carrasco is going to lead the charge. And are there members of the community who are here in chambers who are part of this?
I have them all here with me today.
Okay, they're with you. Wonderful.
Yeah, we're doing things a little different today.
All right, thank you. Take it away, Councilmember.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and I want to welcome our beautiful Kit Kat to the stage today. It's a beautiful day. It's a hot day. I hope everybody's staying hydrated, and I don't forget to put on that sunscreen that is going to keep you safe. But I want to thank you for allowing me to do things just a little differently today. We're proclaiming August 21st. That's National Senior Citizen Day, and I'm not in council, nor am I in my home. I'm in a beautiful senior-serving facility, Villa de Guadalupe, one of many on the east side of San Jose, and proud to be here with some of the residents. It's here that my team and I have had the pleasure of connecting with an amazing community of seniors who have embraced us so lovingly. It's here that we've enjoyed bringing zumba, yoga, healthy snacks, or at least snacks. I don't know about whether they're all that healthy, but mostly really, we've enjoyed the companionship of our residents here and really diving into some deep dialogue and hopefully bringing their voices to the table. Because when you engage with the community, you know that you learn from them, and you really understand what their needs and what their challenges are. And through these conversations come a sobering reminder that the effects of the pandemic were catastrophic, especially causing untold fear and suffering among our seniors. Early during the pandemic, more than a third of the county's first COVID-19 deaths had swept through the east side of San Jose, just four zip codes on the east side of San Jose. Coupled with the tragedy, the extended periods of isolation we experienced during lockdowns have had devastating effects on the mental health of our seniors. We read distressing reports indicating instances of neglect, depression, and mistreatment. And let me be very clear, isolation is the number one affliction of our seniors, often affecting us as badly as the pandemic itself. And as we move towards recovery, they reel over the loss of friends, family. They slowly are making their way back to spaces that they once called home. As we improve healthcare and security, continuum of care, the historic role of our seniors becomes that much more important. They are leaders. They are historians. They are the links to our past. And truly, they are the foundation that give us a sense of purpose and direction. They ground us in their understanding of the world and impact values through the simplest of actions. And they step up. They sure do step up, serving as volunteers in various programs and projects that benefit every sector of society. Wherever the need exists, seniors make their presence felt. That's why it's such an honor to present today's proclamation to Kat, who has been leading the Latino Club here at Villa de Guadalupe. In partnership with Catholic charities, Kat and the Latino Club have been fierce social advocates, securing musical performances, dances, movie nights, and linking me to the street safety improvement projects that we've been engaged in. And they know how to get it done, sending out handwritten invitations and using word of mouth outreach to ensure that seniors in San Jose are connected and aware of the various programs and opportunities available to them. And hello, I forgot to mention that we are among royalty. I want to introduce Kat, who is currently our Villa's reigning queen supreme. An annual beauty pageant hosted by the club, where they compete to see who will be crowned la más bella de la villa. And who can doubt that? Kitty Kat, it's been a pleasure getting to share these experiences with you and the whole community here at Villa. Ultimately, it's my hope that my council colleagues, the administration, and our residents will look for healthy and safe ways to engage with our seniors. And that includes, like I am doing today, meeting them where they are. We can't always expect them to come to us. We have to go to them. Let's do right by them and ensure that their legacies are honored. I want to thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to do this a little unconventionally, and I would ask that you virtually present the proclamation to our beautiful Villa de Guadalupe, and Kat is here to me. So if you don't mind, at least verbalizing.
I will virtually authorize any such presentation. I'm glad that you're there in person. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm going to ask Kat to say a few words.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. Well, we do thank you for this beautiful plaque, and we're going to hang it in a special place in our senior place. So there's really not too much to say. We're just trying to get over this horrible, horrible disease that we're getting and trying to start all over again. Hopefully, hopefully that it's gone very soon, but I doubt it. But anyway, thank you so much. We do appreciate it, and you all took time to be with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kat. Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you, council colleagues.
Thank you. And thank you, ladies, for your participation in all that you do for our community. All right, we're going to go on now to the consent calendar. I think that's where I left off. Are there any items that my colleagues would like to pull? Going first here in the council, I don't see anyone raising their hands. And let's go to Zoom now. Is there anyone who'd like to pull an item from consent?
I have no hands up from members of the council.
All right, let's go to the public then for comments.
Mayor Beetham?
Hi, Mayor Beetham here. I'd just like to quickly thank your ceremonial items today and for Councilperson Carrasco, being at the senior center. It's a great place to hold a Zoom meeting and be a part of the council meeting session process. Interesting idea on her part. Have a good meeting today, and thanks for the meeting overall.
Back to the council.
Okay, is there a motion on consent?
Move adoption.
Let's vote on consent.
Jimenez? Jimenez? Carralis?
Yes.
Cohen? Carrasco? Davis?
Yes.
Esparza? Arenas?
Yes.
Foley? Mahan?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
This is Maya, yes.
And this is Carrasco. Aye.
And this is Sam. Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that's unanimous. We're moving on to item 3.1, which is the report of our city manager, but Lee will do for now.
No report, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Lee. Okay, 3.3, it's the agreement with, agreement on the Employee Assistance Program, employee assistance. I'm sorry, I'm not reading this properly. Critical Incident Response Program. There is a presentation. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Jennifer Schembury, Director of Human Resources and Employee Relations. And with me, I have Emily Hendon, the Benefits Division Manager in HR. We are here today to request your approval to negotiate an agreement with Concern, who has been selected through an RFP process to provide our new EAP services. Our current vendor for these services is MHN, and that has been our vendor since 1994. The contract with MHN is set to expire on December 31st. Our current plan includes mental health counseling and work-life support services, critical incident services, and training. Right now, we offer five sessions per incident for our non-sworn employees and unlimited sessions for our sworn employees and public safety dispatchers. Premiums are paid for by the city. This is 100% city-paid-for benefit for benefited employees and their dependents, regardless of usage. Okay, so since we lasted an RFP for these services, there have been some things that have changed in the marketplace. For the counseling benefits, the unlimited counseling sessions are no longer offered, and MHN, our current vendor, had notified us that of us. So we were aware of that going into the RFP, that we were no longer going to have unlimited counseling sessions. Substance abuse disorder treatment is now legally required to be covered by our health plans. So this was covered under MHN, but since then, a law has passed that it's now required to be covered under our health plan. So Anthem and Kaiser do cover this. So EAP benefits will no longer provide substance abuse disorder treatment. And now there's different types and methods of services that are being provided by EAP, and this was something that we were interested in looking at through the RFP process. They're now offering life coaching in addition to mental health counseling, web-based portals such as apps, self-service, online resources such as self-assessments, and expanded digital networks which improve access to care and mobile applications. So we did conduct an RFP for these services, and the results are in front of you in this memo. We are recommending increasing the number of sessions for our non-sworn employees, increasing this benefit to eight sessions for non-sworn. So we're going from five to eight. And then, as we mentioned, the unlimited sessions are no longer available through the RFP process. We are recommending that we do 20 sessions for sworn employees and public safety dispatchers. Looking at average number of sessions utilized, this is quite a bit higher. And again, I just wanted to reiterate, this is per incident. So if there's one incident, you could get 20 sessions. Another incident, you would get another 20. And EAP benefits are intended to be a short-term benefit for an incident, and if long-term benefits are needed, that is where there would be referrals to Anthem or Kaiser or to your medical provider. This, Concern also offers a robust first responder program, including curated first responder network of providers. And most importantly, and something that we're really excited about, is they have access to BetterHelp, which is a mental health platform that provides online counseling and coaching through web-based interaction, as well as phone and text communication, and then have a mobile application for easy access to EAP services. So our recommendation is for Concern, which is the new EAP company to replace MHN effective January 1st, 2023. There is an increased cost to the city of about $50,000. That would be the premiums for calendar year 2023. And then, Critical Incident Response Services will continue to be billed on a fee-for-service basis. And with that, we are happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much. Questions from my colleagues. Councilman Collin?
Just a quick question for you. These benefits are for existing employees, but do retirees get some benefit from this as well?
This benefit right now is just for current active employees. Retirees are not eligible for it. Other than when they retire, they can continue their benefit through Cobra, but they do have access to mental health benefits through the medical provider, so Anthem or Kaiser or whatever, if they're on a different plan through that medical provider.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Foley?
Hi, thank you for that presentation, and I have a question very much along the same lines in relation to the retirees. So this does not include the retirees. What would it cost, or could we include the retirees, and to what additional expense would that be?
We've looked at that with MHN. We've not looked at that with Concern. That's something that we can look at and bring back to the council.
Okay, I'd appreciate that. And at least, I know many of the retirees are concerned at lack of mental health care post, once they're in retirement, and particularly concerned about PTSD, and this is mostly for your sworn officers and firefighters. So they're concerned about suicides and other mental health issues that affect them once they leave their career. So I would really appreciate to know what it would cost to add in the retirees and what that might look like. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. We have asked retirement services to make sure that they're communicating to the retirees that the access and how to access through Anthem and Kaiser as well, so to make sure that that's well-known.
That's the other thing I want. Thank you for mentioning. That was one of the things I was going to ask you about, is how is that communicated, and what is the benefit to retirees through their, whether they choose Anthem or Kaiser or whoever they can choose post-retirement? What kind of coverage do they get?
This is Emily. If it's Cobra.
Hi, Emily.
Hi. If they can do Cobra for MHN, and they get the exact same services, but Cobra only goes for 18 months, and they have to pay the premium.
Okay.
Through MHN and Kaiser, it's the same. And when they enter into the retirement program, it's the same benefits that they have in Anthem and Kaiser. So I don't remember a month of helping them. Basically, Kaiser doesn't require a referral of mental health, so they have the same access.
Okay, so through Cobra, they could extend the coverage, but they pay whatever that Cobra cost is, right? Okay. All right, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. You know, I neglected to go to the public, so let me do that, and then we'll go. Thank you. You know, I neglected to go to the public, so let me do that, and then we'll go back to the council for the remaining council questions.
Paul Soto?
Yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. Forgot to go to the public. Wow. Thank you, Mayor, for forgetting the public. I think that there needs to be a cost analysis of what the projections are going to be of the retirement costs of the city. Because basically, what we're going to be doing is we're going to be paying out all of this money for the employees. They're not producing any work. We're not getting anything from those particular workers. And that's fine. They did their time, and they got the retirement. That's fine. But those costs and the increasing costs of both medical care and the retirement benefit needs to be analyzed and placed within the context of these topics so that we could get a better analysis of what the cost is going to be, rather than if this person wants Anthem or Cobra. It doesn't matter to me as a citizen which one they take. That's a personal decision that they have to make between them and their spouses and their families. So that's, that's not of like really any concern in this particular meeting. In this particular meeting, these are policy decisions. And so the, so the amounts of monies that are going to be allocated for the medical and the retirement funds, those need to be calculated in the context of this conversation so that we can get a better comprehensive view of what it is that we're talking about and what exactly that's going to mean for the future of San Jose. You can do a five-year cost analysis, a 10-year cost analysis, and a 15-year cost analysis. You're going to have baby boomer generations, they're already retiring now. And this is the largest segment of the workforce. They're all going into retirement. So that needs to be, like I said, a cost, a cost analysis of both of those issues, the retirement fund and the medical. Thank you.
Back to council.
Thank you. Are there questions from my colleagues online?
I have a hand up from Councilmember Asparza.
Okay. Councilmember Asparza?
Hi, yes. I wanted to just state that I agree. And when you spoke, I can't remember who it was that spoke into the microphone. I couldn't hear it, the answer about the retirees. I heard that it could go to Cobra. And so, one, could you repeat that answer into the microphone so it can be heard? And then I had a follow-up.
Sure, Councilmember Asparza. So retirees can do two things. One is when they retire, they can continue their benefit through MHN, through Cobra, and they would be responsible for the premium. So that would be the MHN benefit. But they can only do that for 18 months. There is also mental health benefits available in both Anthem and Kaiser. So if one of our retirees is enrolled in our retiree healthcare, they could get those mental health benefits through Anthem or Kaiser.
And so if they paid, let's say, $1,000 a month to maintain Cobra benefits, they would only get unlimited. They couldn't even get unlimited counseling sessions because MHN is ending that December 31st. Is that correct?
Yes, that would be, that would be the same for city employees, though they're not, no one is going to be eligible for unlimited benefits after December 31st.
And then Kaiser has a limit. I believe it is also five counseling sessions. Is that correct?
We don't believe that's correct, but we can get you the specific Kaiser benefit. We don't believe it.
The limit? Because I know it's not unlimited. So do we know the actual number?
Yeah, so it's based on the clinician. So if the clinician feels like two is enough or 20 is necessary, it's really on a case-by-case basis. There isn't a limit, per se.
Okay, and then what we saw was that the trending number, and I'm not sure what that means, a trending number of sessions provided by EAP services is eight per incident per year. So is that a median? Is that an industry-wide median? So we can assume that some might be more and some might be less? What does that mean?
So as part of the RFP, we talked to other public sector agencies and through our consultant and determined that most agencies were offering between five and eight. So we, we went for eight.
But I do want to clarify, that is for the non-sworn. For the sworn, it is 20. For sworn and public safety dispatchers, we're offering 20.
Okay, and do we know, like, is the usage beneath that? Or are they indicating that they need more than that? Or are they indicating, because that's not addressed in the memo?
So the usage for sworn in 2021, the average number of sessions was 11.6, and we're offering 20.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then I just wanted to add my voice again. I would really like to find a way to include our retirees on this. You know, I, I don't want to conflate, you know, the experiences of veterans with law enforcement. But, you know, my experience with PTSD services on the veteran side has indicated that, you know, sometimes folks aren't able to reconcile with things until they leave, until they leave the service, until they start, you know, civilian life. And so the impact of things can take a while to hit. And, and that counseling does need to be made available. So I just would like to find a way of extending this service to the retirees just for that sort of bridge that then they can go and get a referral to their local medical provider. But just to be there over the phone, I think, would be a great resource. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions from my colleagues online before I? Nope. Okay, I had a few questions. Once I understand that this, this RFP was value-based, not cost-based. My concern is, is that we've got a product that costs more that's providing a limitation that didn't exist previously on the number of sessions per incident we didn't have before, and is in fact excluding substance abuse treatment, which is now covered under health plans. So I guess I'm struggling with the notion that we're paying more for less. Can you sort of ease my concern about that?
So actually, the pricing from Concern that we're paying, that we will be paying for the non-sworn is going up, but the cost for the sworn and public safety dispatchers is going down. And that's why the overall cost was only $50,000 a year, for actually a larger benefit in that we are, I mean, we're giving them 20 sessions, which is not, not typical. Like I said, the unlimited is not typical. But we weren't also getting any of these extra bells and whistles, like the coaching, which is supposed to help with access for people aren't having a true mental health need, but really need some access. They can reach a coach, and they can do it via their telephone, which we haven't had before.
Okay.
And we haven't had this online assessment before either. And we felt like a lot, some employees are complaining about the service from MHN and that we felt that, based on the description and the references, that it truly was more of a white-glove service that we're receiving from Concern.
Okay. And I know you've heard my prior concerns about utilization. I see clearly you guys attempted to, and I appreciate that you brought the employees together in a sort of a Peak Academy group. I'm trying to remember what you call it, the.
Learning lab?
Yeah, learning lab, thank you, to try to brainstorm about how to address utilization. And, and the hope is that maybe some of these other tools, like the telephone, that the coaching and so forth will enable folks to utilize the service more? Okay.
No, we definitely agree with that. I think the BetterHelp part of it and the app and being able to do a lot of the telehealth part, there's a big difference between making an appointment, having to get in your car, drive to a counselor versus being able to just, in your privacy of your own home, by yourself, opening up your laptop and being able to have that communication. We think we will have a big difference in the utilization.
Okay. And forgive me for not being better informed about Medicare, but a significant number of our retirees would be covered by Medicare, presumably Obamacare before that. Do I have reason to believe they'll have access to mental health care through those services? Through those programs?
Even with Medicare, it's still Anthem and Kaiser, and our Anthem and Kaiser are still offering the mental health services.
Okay, so there's already access for retirees?
Yes.
Who would seem without this.
Through Anthem and Kaiser. And that's why, that's why we were asking the Office of Retirement Services, and this issue's been coming up, to make sure that they're communicating that to the retirees. There is definitely a access and a shortage of counselors right now. So I know there has been problems with Anthem with Kaiser. I've personally met with Kaiser over it. But MHN was having the same issues. So that is definitely an issue, but it's not a matter of them not having access at all.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions? Was there a motion already?
I'll move it, people.
Second.
Councilmember Jimenez made the motion, second from Councilmember Davis. Let's vote.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Peralas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Asparza?
Yes.
Arenas? Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Licardo?
Yes.
And recording Arenas says yes as well. It's unanimous.
Okay. Is that a Zoom-induced delay? Is that, is it a problem with connectivity there?
Not on our end.
Okay. All right, I'll just, we'll try to work that out. Okay, 3.4 are actions. Thank you, Jennifer. 3.4 actions related to the Payne Avenue Park Project. There's no presentation. Let's go to the public.
Paul Soto?
Yeah, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. I would have liked to have had at least some type of presentation. This is a, this is a park that's located in an area of the city that was, you know, obviously redlined. So there, to not come to the meeting and not think that the public deserves or has like as a right to have any kind of presentation, this is a land use issue. This is a park. There was park deficits on certain parts of town. I mean, you know, this is going to be, this is like, like, you know what? It's almost like you guys just like, you know what, we don't care. We just don't care. We're just going to bulldoze over every single citizen that has no power to check us. And we're going to do what we want to do because this is our city, and there's nothing that you can do about it. You're going to sit there and you're just going to take it. And this is, this is a concern of mine, because this is the posture of the city. And I don't think, I, I think more of my city than that. That's why I come to these meetings, because I have a high expectation of the ethical and moral policies, the ethical and moral principles that are in your policies, or the lack of the moral and ethical principles in your policies. That's the only reason why I spend all this time here. So with respect to just a particular land issue, that to come to the meeting and say to the public, "We don't have anything to tell you. We don't have no details, no nothing. We're not going to inform you of anything, and then we're just going to go ahead and make a unanimous vote on it, and then just go ahead and pass it." That's a, yeah, that's San Jose. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to the council vice mayor.
Yes, I just want to make a motion to approve this item, which is one of three new parks that we're bringing to District 1.
Second.
Okay, there's avalanche in parks coming to District 1. Are there any members of the council who'd like to speak online?
No.
All right, let's vote.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Peralas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Asparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Licardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, 8.1 is the Community Stabilization Opportunity Pathways Fund Commission. There is a presentation. And I'm looking, I see Angel, are you presenting?
No, Nancy Klein.
Okay, should we skip this one and come back?
Laurie Pocsevarino are presenting on the next two, and I believe are on their way down.
Okay.
So if I can ask for a two or three-minute recess?
Yeah, or we can just, oh, on both these items.
Both of them are going to be here together, yes.
Okay, let's take a minute, and we'll come back as soon as everybody's ready to go. We're in recess.
Very much apologize for my delay. I made a mistake.
We're in recess. Don't worry, Nancy.
Oh.
Yeah, I think you've got another person joining you, is that right?
Oh, they said they just called me up. Sorry, so sorry.
Apparently Laurie's online.
Is Laurie online?
Yep. So Nancy is prepared.
Okay, should we start in then? Why don't you take a minute there to get settled? We'll get going. Surprising everybody with our speed, aren't we? Okay, let's return to session now. I'm going to call, should I call both items together, 8.1 and 8.2?
Sure.
Or, okay. Just want to check in with you guys. Is that how you're presenting them?
Well, we'll do one then the other, Mayor.
All right, let's, let's call 8.1, the Community Stabilization and Opportunity Pathways Fund Commission. There's a presentation. Welcome, Nancy.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm here with Nancy Klein, Director of Office of Economic Development and Cultural Affairs. And I'm here with Laurie Sevarino as well. Rosalyn's on a plane. And we're here to present to you the ordinance associated with the Downtown West Fund Committee. Next slide, please. Whoops, I got it. I know you remember that in May of '21, council approved the Downtown West project along with a roughly $200 million community, $200 million community benefits package. That also included $155 million fund to assist anti-displacement and opportunities for education, training, small business support, and more. The Downtown West efforts included extensive community outreach. When the council approved the project, it also approved Exhibit H, which established a framework for the fund, including the points included in the slide before you, highlighting here that the fund will be governed by a 13-member committee and a fund manager to assist and work on developing the fund itself. The two targeted broad areas in which the fund will make investments are community stabilization, which include displacement, homeless prevention, and more. And the other is opportunity pathways, which will include adults and youth training, And the other is opportunity pathways, which will include adults and youth training, scholarships, small business support, and more. The governance objectives and the fund framework is very exciting. It's a new model for decision-making. It's one that leads, it's first as far as we can see in the nation, of empowering residents of impacted communities. The fund will provide an opportunity to bridge lived experience with those of local leaders and service providers. And we have a commitment to data-driven work, a framework for establishing and evaluating outcomes. And there will be, as mandated, specified by council, checks and balances to aid in transparency. And there will be flexibility that governs and allows the committee and the fund manager to maximize and make most efficient the use of the funds. With that, I'm gonna turn to Lori to detail more of the framework and the ordinance for the fund.
Great, thanks Nancy. So as Nancy mentioned, Exhibit H included most of the provisions necessary to add the new commission to Chapter 2.08 of the municipal code. So these were carried over into the proposed ordinance. The commission will have 13 voting members, including at least five members with lived experience in the program areas that the fund will serve, as well as eight members with technical expertise in relevant fields. The commission will also have non-voting members, three city representatives, and one from Google, with the option to add additional non-voting seats. The ordinance includes the specific criteria for membership from Exhibit H with the intent to represent a range of local perspectives and reflect San Jose's diversity. So the following slides will focus on staff's recommendations on the provisions that were not pulled from Exhibit H. So with respect to terms, members will serve four-year terms with the option for reappointment for no more than two consecutive terms. Of the 13 initial members, six will have two-year terms to start, which will enable about half of the commission to turn over or get reappointed every other year. Staff is recommending the addition of an alternate member that can serve in place of any voting member as needed. Next slide, thanks. Staff is also recommending that each voting member that meets the criteria for lived experience receive a $200 stipend if they attend a commission meeting that month. Next slide. City council will be responsible for appointing the voting members and the alternate, while the city manager will appoint the non-voting members. Next slide. So the city manager's office will conduct the application and evaluation process for the membership in coordination with the Clerk, City Attorney's Office, and Office of Racial Equity. The city manager's office will then recommend a slate to city council as part of a regular meeting, and staff will provide all qualified applications as part of the staff report. Next slide. We held two virtual meetings in May and June on these topics, and the ideas and feedback received at these community engagement events informed staff's recommendations on the ordinance. I'll turn it back to Nancy to wrap up.
Thank you very much, Lori. The next steps will give you a little bit more information about the timing associated with moving forward. In 2022, by the end of September, this September, we'll put out the solicitation for applications to the community, and staff will coordinate with council offices to ensure you can extend the offer to your individual networks. And that we are intending to seat the committee by the end of this year, by December of 2022. In 2023, our work will be to onboard the committee and do the work with the committee to select a fund manager. The committee will work with the fund manager to develop the five-year strategic plan, and staff very much appreciated the blue memo from Councilmember Carrasco, as we do intend that the committee itself is very much engaged in both developing and presenting the five-year strategic plan. And then in 2024, we will target presenting the strategy to council with the committee. And with that, Lori and I are both here to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you Nancy and Lori. Thank you for all your work on this. I appreciate the memory and also from Councilmember Carrasco, I support that recommendation. Let's go to the public.
Mary Helen Doherty?
Thank you. My name is Mary Helen Doherty, and in partnership with a broad coalition of faith, labor, and grassroots community partners, we are grateful and excited regarding the creation of this fund. In addition to having funding readily available to combat displacement, we are also very supportive of community members with lived experience deciding how stabilization fund dollars are allocated. We urge you to support staff's recommendations and accept the proposed amendment, Councilmember Carrasco's memo, her memo, that will allow greater participation from this commission that further empowers the intent of this fund in crafting the five-year strategic plan. We also look forward to the continuation of this work as empowered community members lead solutions that contribute and make a significant difference in the outcome of the work of this commission. Thank you very much.
Paul Soto?
Yes, Paul Soto from The Horseshoe. One of the things that was conspicuously absent from the discussion was a representative from The Horseshoe, from the Gardner area, a Chicano. I'm not talking about no Caucasian or no Asian. I'm talking about a Chicano that has lived in that area. That was conspicuously absent from the table. You got Somos Mayfair, you got SB Rising, you got Working Partnerships and Rebecca Armandares. You got them in on this deal in 2016. Okay, this whole, this whole deal, this $200 million deal for Google was crafted in 2016. I've sent the emails to the city, the cities in possession of those emails that were generated by Rebecca Armandares. She admitted to it. She was working in 2016. That was one year before the land sale to Google. So how is it that she is gonna be working on these committees in order to make this deal go through? One year before it was even discussed at council? The reason why is because there was three members, District Six, I mean District Three, District Five, and the mayor. All non-disclosure agreement signatories on that non-disclosure agreement. The legitimacy of this, of this deal is in question, and it's gonna get challenged because you have no representative, no Chicano from there, but you got everybody from the east side. But yet, Google is gonna be literally around the block from The Horseshoe. And what that's gonna do is it's gonna create an economic pressure on the Chicanos that live in that area, and it's gonna constantly, it's gonna squeeze them out. And that has not been discussed. That needs to be put on this table. And if you don't, then you're irresponsible.
Wascar Castro?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Wascar Castro, Working Partnerships. Proud to stand alongside a broad coalition of faith, labor, and grassroots community partners to express our excitement for this really monumental opportunity with the creation of this fund. Along with having dollars readily available to combat displacement, we're also very supportive of this model. Where community members with lived experience are going to have the ability to decide how stabilization fund dollars are being allocated. I would also like to express my appreciation to staff for all their work to date and for opening up multiple opportunities for various stakeholders and community members to provide input on how this process could be as inclusive and open as possible. In that spirit, we'd like to express our support for staff's recommendation as well as the amendment laid out in Councilmember Carrasco's memo to allow for greater participation throughout this process from the commission that will be overseeing this fund. Thank you very much, and we very much look forward to the continuation of this work.
Luddy?
Yes, hi, good afternoon. My name is Letizia Alvarez, and I work for Sacramento Community Service. I'm here to provide comments on this item, and I just wanna thank our council member Magdalena Carrasco for drafting this memo. And then also, this is a great opportunity for the community to have their voice being heard. And this will be possible to this advisory committee. So they are very, they are the experts when it comes to live experience. So that's why I'm very grateful for this memo, and I urge the council to vote in favor of passing this memo. Also, it's time for the city of San Jose to do the right thing in favor of the community, which is just moving forward with this. And very excited to continue working with the community and see these members applying for this opportunity of being part of the advisory committee. Thank you.
Alex Schor?
Good afternoon, council. This is Alex Schor, Executive Director of Catalyze SV. Just wanted to affirm our comments and support from last year around the community engagement components. Bringing community close to decision-making and dollars is such a good practice, and lots of praise to the community groups who advocated for this, the council members who supported it, and the city staff who's moved it forward. Just an outstanding example of quality community engagement. And Councilmember Carrasco's memo looks good too, so like to see that and supportive of that. So just thank you again to staff. You know, there are plenty of meetings where we're asking for you for things or critiquing things, and we just also like to come and make sure that we're praising folks when they're doing great work, especially when it's on an issue of such importance to catalyze SV and our members' good community engagement that emphasizes equity. So thank you so much, council, staff, and other folks in the city.
Back to the council?
All right, back to the council. Let's go first here in the chambers, Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna take the opportunity to thank Lori and Nancy for all their work on developing this trailblazing commission. Glad that we have got here, and I absolutely agree with the, with the public comment about Greater Gardner needing to be represented on this, on this commission. And I know that we will continue to work together to get the word out for those neighborhoods because I represent them, and they are very active, as you know, Nancy, and I know Lori knows as well. So I'd like to move the staff recommendation, including the supplemental and the memo from Councilmember Carrasco.
Second.
Second.
All right, motion. I see no other members in chambers online.
I have Carrasco, and I did just receive a speaker card.
Okay.
From a member of the public.
All right, let's ask that member of the public to come forward, and then we'll go to Councilmember Carrasco.
Hi, I'm Perry Chemical Engineer in high-tech manufacturing, high-volume manufacturing, and would like to give my comments to Community Stabilization and Opportunity Pathways Fund Commission, to all the, to Mayor and all the 10 council members. So this total fund should be divided into like for newborn babies and newborn moms, K-1 to K-12 education, community college education, BS, MS, and PhD students who are residing in San Jose, how they can help San Jose City or Community Stabilization. So it's pretty divided evenly or according to the population. That's my request, so that from newborn baby to the senior citizens and people who are struggling for end-of-life solutions. So everybody should be covered, so it's called a cradle-to-grave solutions.
Thank you, sir.
That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, for councilmembers online, I have Carrasco and Arenas both with hands up.
Okay, Councilmember Carrasco?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to also extend my gratitude to Nancy and to the entire team that's been working on this. This is a monumental moment as we continue to move forward and decide the future of San Jose. Many folks who are very interested in being engaged and participating and contributing, we've heard it for the past several years, actually since the beginning of this, of this journey. And that's the purpose of the memo that I've submitted, and I'm hoping that my council member colleagues will support continued engagement by the commission who don't want to just contribute, but they wanna be part of crafting and guiding the commission and the plan for the city of San Jose. I just wanted to thank all the members of the community who continue to stay engaged and those who will be part of the commission. This is a lot of very important work, critical work for our downtown area, but truly, as it's going to resonate throughout the entire city, I'm grateful for the commitment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Arenas?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just gonna join in with congratulating staff, our community members, and everyone who contributed, including my colleagues, to where we are right now. And so this is wonderful work, this is great work. I also agree that there probably should be a greater level of participation, representation from those neighborhoods that are going to be impacted the most. But this is a change that will be for all San Joseans. One of the things that we did earlier this week was, or gosh, was it last? Oh, my gosh, for Neighborhood Services Committee, which I'm the chair of. And that is, we are looking at the Proposed Equity Roundtable. And this was, this is a committee or a roundtable advisory committee that came out of the restructuring of the Human Services Committee. If you all remember, we couldn't get forum to, for that, for that committee, and it hadn't met for many years. And so Sulma Masial from our Office of Race and Equity has been leading that. And they've done a wonderful job, presented this to our committee last week. And one of the things that they found, which I think was the best practice within some of the committees that are similar to that, was that they were going to pay the stipend that they decided that each of those committee members would have, especially those who have lived experience, or the lived experience seat, that they would be able to receive those, that stipend, regardless of whether they attended the meetings or not. And one of the reasons that they did that was because they understand that in between the meetings, there is some feedback that is needed from those committee members or advisory members. And that work should also be recognized, whether they actually make, you know, officially they make the meeting or not. Is this something that we could also carry over into this group? As I believe this is the best practice that our Office of Race and Equity are establishing within this advisory group, which is going to take the place of the Human Services Commission. And I'd love to tell you the name of it, but they haven't come to that decision just yet. I think, if it don't quote me, it's going to be San Jose for All.
Councilmember and Mayor, thank you very much for the question. This, you're tapping into an issue that was very much a subject of a lot of discussion. We, so thank you for that. We had been looking at the models that were already established in the city, including, most recently, council had worked on the HCD Committee, Housing Community Development Committee. And the model that the committee used was for attendance, paying the $200, and it was a $200 amount, so we're consistent there, for attendance at the meeting, at the annual, sorry, monthly meeting, in acknowledgement that there may well be other meetings. And the effort, which is substantial that you're just referencing, had not yet been under discussion. So we were in line with prior work. So we were in line with prior work.
I'm sorry, councilmember Arenas, you may be muted right now.
Yes, I am. Um, I'm asking if we can maybe take a, uh, have, uh, this group, um, or representative connect with the Office of Race and Equity so that we can, uh, be fair to those, uh, committee members. Are those folks who were asking to attend our meetings, um, especially when they have to miss out on some work um, or have to be away from, um, their home and have to take public transportation or just even gas these days is very expensive? So it would be wonderful to have a standardized way, a standardized approach to stipends, especially for, uh, those advisory groups. Um, once again, thank you so much for all the really great work. I'm really excited about this next phase, and I know the rest of our, our community is too, as you've heard.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember Davis, was that from before? Okay. Uh, any other comments? Uh, okay. I, I just wanted to say, uh, uh, thank you again to everybody who's been working collaboratively on this effort. Uh, certainly Lori and Nancy, but also so many in the community. We know this is a, still a lot of work to do. Uh, we got, uh, a couple of years before this thing is really up and running. Uh, but I think what's really critically important that's been accomplished now is that, uh, the tone and, and the dialogue around this really important investment in our city has changed dramatically. Uh, and I hope that we can see that by all pushing together, uh, we can expand a lot of opportunity for an awful lot of our residents who've been struggling without enough opportunity, uh, for too many years. And I think that's really positive development through all this. So I look forward to continue, um, to, to push together and, and make this work worthwhile for everyone. Um, let's vote on the motion from councilmember Davis.
Arenas?
Yes.
Prowlis?
Yes.
Cohen?
Hi.
Carrasco?
Hi.
Davis?
Yes.
Asparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Bulley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Lucardo?
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right, finally, 8.2 is our, uh, is a master agreement or set of master agreements for community engagement consultants. Nancy?
Thank you very much, mayor and council. Um, once again, Lori and I will be presenting a brief presentation on the topic. Thank you. This request, as the mayor already mentioned, what is for council approval of consulting services, uh, not only consulting services, but in addition, other resources that, uh, not only OED, but other departments, uh, and council offices can take advantage of. What we're specifically recommending to you today is adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute up to nine master agreements for on-call community engagement consultants for terms through the end of June 2024, for a total amount of compensation spread over all nine for $4 million. We're also asking that if needed, that the agreements could be extended for an additional two years, and that we negotiate and execute amendments to the master agreements to shift dollars between them so that we can make most efficient and optimize the use between the agreements. And that would be the, under the authority of the city manager. And you'll hear a little bit more about this, uh, through the presentation. But we're also asking that staff be allowed to conduct a separate procurement process for establishing a bench of on-call community-based organizations, so community-based organizations and nonprofits, that can also, in very important ways, assist the city with engagement processes. With that, I'll ask Lori to share the details.
Thanks, Nancy. So here's a brief summary of the process. The RFP ran from April 12th through May 3rd, and we advertised the opportunity through a variety of channels and received 23 proposals. A panel of three city staff evaluated the proposals against the criteria in the RFP and recommended a word of master agreements to the nine consultants that scored a 60 or above. The criteria emphasized local experience, knowledge of inclusive, inclusive engagement practices, and use of consensus-building approaches. Next slide. So here is the list of the nine consultants that staff has recommended for the master agreements. All city departments, including council offices, would have access to this on-call bench of consultants. Some of these consultants provide all of the services listed in the RFP, while others specialize in a subset. So these services include assistance with community advisory committees, meeting facilitation, event planning, engagement strategy and implementation, communications and outreach support, needs assessment, and process evaluation. Next slide. So with council's approval, staff would negotiate and execute the nine master agreements with initial terms through June 30th, 2025. And each master agreement would have a not-to-exceed dollar limit. As project needs arise, staff would send out a request for services to qualified consultants on the bench and select one based on their responses. Staff would then execute a service order against the master agreement of the selected consultant. It's important to note that the city is not allocating any funds at this time. This would occur in the future at the service order stage using project-specific funding. Also, OED would be responsible for tracking the service orders and contract limits. So any staff interested in utilizing the bench would contact OED. I'll turn it back to Nancy to wrap up. Thank you.
There's a bit of innovation for us in this, that the, um, on-bench, on-call community consultants, um, would be available not just for the work that OED is doing, but other departments and, in fact, council offices could allocate their funds and take advantage, work with the consultants that are being requested to be approved. The other piece that's, that's, um, important is that through the process, we, we recognize that it's important to make sure that CBOs and nonprofits have the opportunity to do this work. They pr- they provide a very important, uh, network to communities that they are most affiliated with. And we believe that they could expand their offerings if given the chance to do additional work. So we are also requesting that staff direct us to go forward with an additional RFP, which we would have out for bid by mid-October. And we also want to mention that as part of that RFP, staff would hold a pre-proposal conference in order to make sure we're answering any questions that nonprofits or CBA, CBOs may have, questions perhaps about how to obtain their small and local designations within the city and more. With that, staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Nancy. All right, let's go to the public with questions and comments.
Local Color?
Hello. Uh, greetings. My name is Carmen Gaines, and I work as the Associate Director with Local Color, a nonprofit organization uplifting and advocating for the creative communities in San Jose. I appreciate the privilege of participating in last week's meeting, and this was, thanks, this week's meeting, to comment on this memo. However, this is a privilege. I am providing comment today in favor for another, um, bench-specific open call, specifically for CBOs and nonprofits. The work we do already exemplifies the power of community-based organizations to reach and conduct community engagement in a way that reaches people where they are and specific areas, and also the unique specific areas that we're already in touch with. Thank you for the collaboration and communication thus far in considering and adding this memo to the, today's agenda and considering an amendment to the master agreements for community engagement consultants. The resources this contract, um, could provide would have a rippling effect for the commonwealth of the communities that we are already deeply engaged with, and would provide new opportunities for us to grow through the resources of a, a master agreement contract. These comments also relate in favor to the previous, uh, agenda item, 1.8.1. Uh, thank you, and I release the rest of my time.
Paul Soto?
Uh, yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. Um, I want to thank, uh, councilwoman Arenas and, uh, and Carrasco for at least acknowledging that the, the, let me, let me put it in these terms. The largest Latino community in proximity to downtown, the largest Latino community in proximity to downtown, has primarily Chicanos in it, is the Horseshoe. That's the Horseshoe. Okay, so, so, so to leave this barrio out and a representative that has studied the redlining documents for five years, I have all of them, five years. I've studied the economics of the area. I've studied the sociological, uh, impacts of the area. I am a generational, uh, descendant of that area and Sasi Pues. You can't get a better informed citizen that is engaged than myself. It just doesn't exist in the city. There's, there's over 260,000 Mexicans in the city, or Latinos. Over 260,000. And there isn't one person that is doing the work on the scale that I'm doing. I'm in housing issues, land issues, uh, uh, parks and recreation, the jails, the police, the, uh, community, uh, uh, relations with the police department and the community. These are, this is what I do. Why? And why am I effective in doing what it is that I'm doing? Because I know the area. I know what it's like to grow up in systemic racist policies. I know what it's like to experience institutionalized racism. No one's going to teach me anything about that. What you can do is you can sit down and be taught about the generational impacts of all of those policies. But it, it's like you don't want that. You reject that. And because you reject that, the legitimacy of a policy is rejected.
Alex Shore? Alex?
Hi, yes, sorry, this is Rosia Molina from Catalyze SV. You heard from our executive director, Alex Shore, earlier today. We are very happy and encouraged to see the progress that this agenda item has made. Thank you so much to the OED staff, particularly Lori, for her cooperation and transparency as we've explored this project with her. We're very happy to see the CBOs and the nonprofit community considered in this supplemental item. We're very excited to also hear the updated timeline and, and know that this is a priority that's going to be fulfilled this year. One outstanding question that I do have is how will the funding for the CBOs and nonprofits compare to the, to the max contract amounts that are being provided to the private firms? That's one piece of information that we have not received. Um, but other than that, we're very excited to continue working with OED and the council members and their staff on increasing community engagement and representation in the development process. We, we believe that the community will add value to the various discussions, and we're happy to know that there will be a bench in the near future that will allow us to support those activities. Catalyze SV is here to support the efforts of OED and the various offices in San Jose, and we're very excited about this bank contract providing us an avenue for funding and other nonprofits in the space. Thank you so much for your support, and we look forward to connecting.
Claire Kennedy?
Hello, my name is Claire Kennedy, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Silicon Valley Council of Nonprofits. SBCN would like to express support of the staff recommendations outlined in the supplemental memo from Assistant Director Klein, specifically the creation of a bench of community-based organizations to assist the city with, with community engagement processes. As expressed in the memo, SBCN also believes CBOs can help engage harder-to-reach populations, improve credibility of processes, and generate more equitable outcomes that will enrich any outreach the city wishes to pursue in the future. SBCN stands in support of this recommendation and is ready to assist in distributing this opportunity to all local nonprofits once finalized. Thank you.
Gio?
Hi, my name is Giovanni Medina, and, uh, I'm, I'm just a representative on behalf of some of the, some of the Chicano, uh, people in my community. I just wanted to be a second voice for the, the gentleman earlier speaking on, uh, Horseshoe, and thanks, Sylvia Arenas, because it's true, when we reach out, uh, it seems like you guys don't listen, and a lot of times I get cut off myself. So just wanted to be another voice for them and, uh, thank them for speaking up. That's my time, thank you.
Back to the council.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember Mahan?
Thanks, mayor. Hi, Nancy, thanks for the presentation and the very detailed memos. Uh, I wanted to ask about the additional RFP, which you, which you talked about. One, just a technical question, is, do we need more funding, or is that still within the $4 million? I wasn't clear on that.
Thank you, councilmember, within the $4 million. And if the monies are spent more quickly, staff would have the opportunity to come back to council again on unsuccessful implementation to request additional funds.
I see, okay. And I noticed that quite a few of the consultants who you're recommending here, who scored highly, are not based within the city of San Jose. It sounds like the second RFP would, would try to maybe provide some balance to that. Do you, are there, can you tell us more about what the difference is between the first process and then what the secondary process would be evaluating for?
Thank you again for the question. In the, in the first process, the, the work was, uh, directed, uh, to consultants and CBO nonprofits. And in the course of doing the, uh, RFP work itself, uh, we found that nonprofits and CBOs who, who may not be as familiar of going through these types of processes, especially the city requirements, um, just the, the loading, the, the process in on Bidingo has some challenge to it in and of itself, honestly, um, that we didn't get responses that were successful. So we wanted to acknowledge the voices of CBOs and nonprofits are indeed very important, thus the request for the second RFP.
Got it. Um, and then how do we evaluate for, just in, for the outreach portion? I understand there are a lot of different capabilities we're looking at here, but for outreach, some feedback I've heard from my constituents is, is sometimes not feeling like they've been reached out to. And obviously, our office does our best to do that when we're aware that staff is looking for community input. But we've, we've had some cases recently where we haven't always known. And then, uh, the answer from staff to the community has been, well, we, we reached out. Here's the list of nonprofits we engaged with. So how do we, whether it's through this process or the follow-up, um, and I, there was reference to the service order stage. What do we do to try to ensure that the consultants and CBOs we're working with are not just going with the existing list they've got, but we're pushing them out of their comfort zone to really reach folks who get left out for one reason or another?
Thank you for the question again. There's a lot in what you just mentioned. Um, we had a great example with work that was done on Downtown West, and the extensive outreach, uh, really did hit a lot of people. And yet, there were people who did not feel that they were engaged. So that is an ongoing challenge. There's been other work by the Housing Department, the Department of Planning, on the housing element, and other pieces that are now modeling and pushing how to get to more people and more efficiently. With a wide range of possible avenues, looking at data sets that perhaps we could make available, uh, and that would be probably for the larger or experienced consultants. But also, how can we build capacity by doing work and learning from it through the CBOs and nonprofits? So my answer basically is that we are learning, we are trying new things, and working to get that experience targeted to communities, but also more broadly based for a bigger reach.
Yeah, and that leads to what's, I guess, probably my last question here, which is just, obviously, we need a range of capabilities and strategies and tactics from the very offline interpersonal promotoras and knocking on doors and, you know, very manual outreach through personal networks. We also need some consultants who are best in class at using digital technology to cast a really wide net and reach people where they're spending a lot of time. I couldn't- I couldn't tell from the memo in that latter category, really for either. It wasn't, it didn't seem specific enough to me. At least, it didn't answer for me the question of, are we really identifying... Does our bench include that wide range of capabilities at a very high level of quality? I mean, are we confident that there are groups in here that can make really great short-form video content or can run online advertising campaigns at one end of the spectrum or can do the very offline rooted in the community, more manual outreach? Do we feel like that range of capabilities is really represented here?
Fortunately, we do have a depth and breadth of providers here that are very experienced as well. And for even more detail, Lori may want to respond to that.
Yeah, I would say that the nine consultants offer a wide range. I'm looking at the results of the evaluation, and most of them do provide all of the services. There are a couple that really specialize in certain things. So, for example, EMC specializes in the community needs assessment, and they're a very experienced firm doing really interesting surveys and detailed work in that realm. So a lot of digital work. But we do expect these consultants to implement a wide range of methods. And sometimes that might be the door-to-door knocking. It might be more the boots-on-the-ground work. But I do see that the CBO RFP is being more of that door-to-door and on-the-ground type work. So it'd be really complementary to the type of services that consultants provide, which is really an extension of what staff does. And if we, by having that additional capacity from both consultants and CBO partnerships, we will be able to do more, better, faster, earlier in the process. A lot of the times, we're just ending up having to move too quickly to really do the robust work on the front end of things, which, you know, hopefully, your constituents would hear, be more likely to hear about it if we were able to get in front of them earlier on.
Okay, and then, sorry, I promise this is the last one. At that service order stage, so based on what I just heard, I assume we can combine different consultants who have different strengths, have two or three of them working together on the same project?
Absolutely.
What have we learned in recent years about setting the objective success measures that help us ensure that when we do execute a service order with one or more groups that they're delivering the kind of impact in terms of community engagement that we want to see?
Also, an area we're learning and very much paying attention to what gets measured gets done. And so, it is a process and looking and working with the multiple departments as well as community partners. And what is the goal? What is our objective and key results in order to guide us for the service orders?
Okay, all right, thanks, Nancy. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Foley?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Lori and Nancy. And I'm just going to follow up on some of the questions that Councilmember Mahan had. So you had mentioned that the council offices could hire these consultants as well. What would be the process for that? And how would we know which might be the best consultant to fit our particular needs at that time? And one third question is, how will we be billed? What kind of rate are we going to be paying? I'm assuming we're not getting the service for free, that the council office is then going to have to write a check.
Thank you for the question. Absolutely, the council office would allocate funds, much as every department will allocate funds. And Lori provided in the information the basis of the applications of what each provider would bill by. We can make sure council offices have that as well so that there's perfect clarity, transparency before you would embark on a particular effort.
Okay, and will there be easy for us to determine which of these nine consultants or maybe the CBOs that we end up contracting with too, that there may be a good fit, but we don't know which one to look to? So will there be some guidance on their different qualities, what they specialize in?
Yes, we have written material that highlights and gives examples of the work the firms do and what their approach is. And Lori, I'll ask to respond as well, who has a good deal of experience with many of them. So crafting the best mix will be something that our office can help with.
Okay, great. I appreciate that. I really see that hiring one of these consultants could be really beneficial to a council office, especially a district-like mine currently that has a lot of affordable housing projects coming in that we do a tremendous amount of outreach, but the outreach we do is this neighborhood and that neighborhood and this neighborhood, and it's a little bit scattershot. We try to stay focused on the area that we're looking at, but as soon as we bring up one area, then another area wants to know when's the community outreach in that, and it may not be far enough along, but to even have a community meeting. But so outreach is really extremely important, and we think we know how to do it at a council office, but we don't necessarily. So it will be, I feel very beneficial to utilize the expertise of these consultants. So I want to thank you for bringing that in. And if we don't have a motion, I'll put a motion on the table to approve the item.
Second.
All right, there's motion and second.
And that's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Esparza?
Thank you, Mayor. I have some questions on this. Particularly, so first off, with major policy proposals like TDM strategy, citing policy, and many other things like COVID, we rely heavily on our nonprofit partners to do outreach in communities that are typically hard to reach. And just some of them that come to mind are First Five, the Franklin McKinley Children's Initiative, Solmos Mayfair, and so many more. So communities that are often low-income working families won't necessarily go to a community meeting just because they get a postcard in the mail, especially from an organization that they don't know or maybe they don't trust. And so, my main issue with this process is that we're pitting consultants and CBOs against each other in this bidding process instead of setting up a process from the beginning that allows our CBOs to provide us with their specific expertise. And the list of options here are, on the list of services that are offered are community advisory, committee assistance, public outreach and community engagement, meeting facilitation, communications and producing graphics, event planning, a community needs assessment and evaluation work. And so, you know, during COVID, we talked a lot about providing capacity support to the NGOs, the very NGOs that we've relied on so much. So this could have been a great opportunity to continue to support CBOs. And so, I'm trying to understand that process a little bit more, especially when this moved so quick. The RFP bid period was three weeks. And yes, we reached out to community leaders to sit on the evaluation panel, but no one responded to the offer. I'm guessing everything was very fast-moving seeing that three-week time period. So can you address how the thinking about not including the CBOs, how the second RFP process is going to move forward, why we didn't look at this as an opportunity to provide more capacity support to our nonprofit partners, and how the funding compares?
Councilmember, thank you very, very much for the question. Originally, what we set out to do was include consultants and the CBOs and nonprofits. So we agree with you. It's really important to include community-based organizations and nonprofits in the efforts with the city. They do an incredible work. In fact, in many instances, they're the ones who know their communities or most instances very much the best, and we need to address that. An example was in Downtown West work. We did have consultants who had done a lot of work in other areas and provided a really great service that really boded well and did well for the community. But we also hired seven local community-based organizations to reach into their organizations or their networks to provide assistance that was really pivotal, groups like even San Jose Jazz or the OCSA or Solmos Mayfair or others. We totally agree with you that capacity building for our community-based organizations and nonprofits is essential. We're using, as you know, in D-7, too, we're using dollars from ARP to fund and allocate capacity-building opportunities. So it was, we didn't want to not have CBOs or nonprofits achieve the points necessary to be included. And we do need to move forward quickly. There are one in particular group that we're trying to move forward with, if this is approved by council, with an effort from one of the consultants, whoever wins or gets the allocation based on the process identified to you just a few slides ago. So we have a need to proceed, but we also very much agree with what you were saying about including community-based organizations and nonprofits for multiple reasons.
So why didn't we combine them, Nancy?
We tried to initially. This went out. Councilmember, it did go out to both consultants and CBOs nonprofits?
No, I saw that, and I read the memo, but...
Maybe I misunderstood. Do you mean wait until we got the other out on the street and...
There we go. Sorry. My iPad just died and then came back. So why didn't we combine them? Because, or why didn't we just extend the period? It's at three weeks. It moved very quickly. There's up to $4 million at stake. Why didn't we just extend it? So that, and work more closely with our CBOs?
Great. Also, very much appreciate the reason you're, or I believe, why, I understand the reason. We are trying to move forward. OED has specific requirements that we want to get going on, and that if we wait much longer, we will miss deadlines that are important. We've been told there are others in the city that would also benefit from going through the process that was outlined. And, you know, we're always learning, and we didn't think the process was difficult for CBOs. We normally, so for example, whenever an RFP goes out, councilmember, if we get comments from anyone who's reading it in the process of their considering applying, we have definitely in the past gotten comments, and we've extended the deadline, for example. But no comments came to us either about the timing or indicating any particularly, particular difficulty about responding. So we didn't get it, that it was difficult, and we want to make sure that we are including CBOs and nonprofits.
And so, how does the funding compare for this RFP and then the one that is coming that includes CBOs?
We are going to ensure that, one of two ways, as we were just speaking on another council question. The funding can either be allocated from the $4 million, and then if the funding dwindles more quickly, we come back to council. And/or, it's also possible for us to establish, when we come back to you, its own pool of an up-to-limit. So that is definitely something that we can consider in both ways. From your, would you share which way you would prefer?
And when is that second RFP going out? I missed that.
So, no problem. So we are targeting by mid-October, and then we'll have the pre-proposal conference before that. We were going to suggest having the RF out for a month to give a bit more time. And we're also very much open to hearing people or nonprofits or CBOs share what timing they believe that would be beneficial.
So just a couple of thoughts sort of immediately. And one is that the timing coincides. So this, what is before us today goes through June 30, 2025 with a two-year option.
Yes.
And so, I'm sure my colleagues may have thoughts, but mine are that the CBO RFP aligns with that so that in the future, we will be able to do one inclusive of all. And my preference would be to have them both be able to access the $4 million, the same $4 million that we're approving today, because it's up to $4 million. And then, and then we can add to that at a later date that can go out to both the consultants as well as the CBOs. I just, I think this is really important, and I'm drawing on the experience of the past two and a half years where frankly, council offices have to step in and do a lot of on-the-ground work. And then, and then we rely on our CBO partners. David, you might want to mute. And we rely on our CBO partners on the past two and a half years. And so, I do think that we have asked them to help us. We've asked them to provide their expertise in the different communities all over our city. And we should build on that expertise and capacity. And so, you know, and and I do think that having CBOs and businesses and the consultants out there, you know, frankly, some may do the same thing, others may do something better, but what we're approving in front of us is actually a menu of options so that we're approving all of these consultants, and then we, as a city, can use whatever piece on the menu that we need. And so, it shouldn't, we shouldn't have to differentiate between our CBOs and our consultant partners. And so, I do, do we need to, we don't need to amend the motion because that's what you're going to do in October, correct?
Correct. That's from staff's recommendation.
Okay. I'll support the motion, but this really does need more partnership with our CBOs. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Arenas?
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate the comments of Councilmember Esparza. This is exactly what we've been asking, or a portion of what we've been asking for our staff to do throughout the pandemic so that we can ensure that folks, so that our community understood what services are available, how to access them, how to stay updated with the most recent health information guidance and restrictions. And so, I'm surprised that because you've heard us over and over talk about this for the last two and a half years, that this would come to us after the fact. And so, I'm happy that you're going to have this second proposal in October to include some of our CBOs. I'm really concerned that some of these consultants aren't from San Jose, which is something that I thought I heard. And so, I wanted to clarify, how many of the folks that will be on tap, if you will, how many of those are familiar with our city and are San Jose-based?
Thank you for the question. I'll turn to Lori, who may share information, both where they're from and others who have worked extensively in... and others who have worked extensively in San Jose, might be relevant as well. Lori?
Yeah, basically, all of the firms are Bay Area firms and they've all done work for the city of San Jose. Three of the nine did qualify for the local and small business preference, meaning that they have a presence in San Jose. So local to the city. Yeah, I think a couple do national work, but they're almost mostly Bay Area-based in where they serve.
So none of them are from San Jose, is what you're saying?
Three, three of the nine are based in San Jose.
Nine are familiar or have served San Jose, but I, what I'm asking is if they are in San Jose.
Yes, the three that qualified for the local and small business preference do, are based in San Jose.
Are based in San Jose and have a history with San Jose of more than, like an average of what, how many years being in San Jose?
Oh, I don't have that data on hand.
Yeah.
We certainly can get that to you and get it back to you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, you know, this is disheartening because this is something that many of us have been asking for in order to engage in our community in a more meaningful way. And some of those best practices, as you heard, throughout the pandemic have been, one is to be place-based. And so when you are where people need you, people can access you, right? And so this pick and choose cat menu of services, while I think it's very convenient for many other departments, I think for the hardest-to-reach communities and the hardest, and the most, not hardest to reach, but those who have multiple jobs and multiple responsibilities that the last thing that they will, you know, want to do is come to an evening meeting when their time is split between work and their children and just catching their breath. So for me, it, it would be really meaningful to have, not whenever we need our, to extrapolate information from our community, but to develop relationships, and this is why it's so important for our CBOs to, and I think for, for me, would be a lot more meaningful for our CBOs to be the ones heading this because they understand our community. There is not one council member here, maybe with the exception of, of the mayor, that knows all of the city and that knows all of these neighborhoods throughout the city. And that at any moment's notice can connect with some of these folks. And so that's what we're asking some of these consultants to do. And for me, I would have potentially given some feedback around maybe having a, a, a region that each area is responsible, or each consultant is responsible for. So that you have a relationship developed with that community and those CBOs and those resources. And, and that it comes from a best practice and a practice that we know that has been effective, especially during the pandemic, which is being place-based, right? And then the, the, the second thing is, is those are being relationship-based. And I think, I don't know who it is that mentioned the Promotoros model, but that is part of what we, I had asked our mayor to fund and it got funded about a year ago so that we can connect with our community in a very meaningful way as we all recover from this pandemic and from the pitfalls of the pandemic. We know that this is a model that works with our community that I, frankly, I'm concerned about the most. I'm not concerned about the people that tap into the surveys and have the resources to understand how it is to get on a Zoom call, having a Zoom meeting and, and, and give us feedback because those are the people that we normally rely on. I want us to expand, especially if we are investing $4 million. I, I expect that we have these great relationships with all those communities that are struggling and the ones that have, that we have not been able to connect with in the past. And I'll remind everybody, I know that you've heard me say this before, but I'm just, to prove this, add something to this point, and that is that in Welch, even though we have reopened our community center many years ago, or more than four years ago, every year we can expect to have some classes canceled because people don't know that the classes are happening because there isn't that onsite registration that is needed, there isn't that handholding that is needed. And so then we, what we have to do, or offices have to do is connect with the schools nearby and talk to those principals and to that faculty and let them know, hey, your, our kiddos are going to miss out of, of great recreational and camps and summer camps if we don't get them registered. So could you please refer some families over? And that's how we get some of our spots filled. Now, not every, we're, we're not going to be there each and every time. And so I think we need to make sure that we learn from our lessons and build that into this upcoming RFP proposal that will, that we're going to see in October, especially as we look back at all of the conversations that we've had around outreach. So I, I'm, I'm going to expect to see some of those needs that we've expressed on behalf of our community really addressed in this RFP, in this upcoming RFP and somehow make sure that these two segments of, of consultants, whether they're CBOs or non-CBOs, but, but that are professional facilitators or coordinators or whatever it is that their, their company is focused on doing, but in that there is a true partnership between those two. Because what I'm thinking is that we're going to render what we want from the people that we choose. And I think what we're doing right now is more of the same.
Thank you. Did, Nancy, did you want to respond anyway?
Just to say once again, thank you, and we, we do agree. We want to make sure that the CBOs who are very expert in their networks actually get paid for and can continue to get benefit of capacity building through the work and/or other resources that we're able to, to direct toward them. So definitely we'll be taking in the insights provided by council and including in the RFP as it moves forward and then comes back to you.
Okay, thank you. I'll offer slightly different perspective, I guess I always have to be the oddball. I, I appreciate a lot of the comments that have been said, and I think there's real value, for example, in what we've done in the past in exploring the Promotoro model, I think that's been very valuable. And I don't doubt that consultants are often helpful, particularly given how short-staffed we are. We know that's true in every department. I guess the question I had is, is there any hope that among this consultant pool, among the, the folks that we have, I know they all have different skills and specializations or so forth, but is there any hope that any of these consultants could actually help us to exercise the muscle to get stronger internally in community outreach? So that's sort of the question, and let me just tell you sort of the underlying bias in all that, which is, in my view, I am concerned, my bias is that I'm concerned about an approach that says for the city to go communicate effectively with its residents, we need to go hire somebody. Our job is to serve our residents, and I know we all take that job very seriously, all of us. And we get paid to serve our residents, that means we have to communicate with our residents, that means we need to listen to our residents. And all those things are things that I know we do, but we don't always do them well or perfectly. We know there's always challenges and all that. And I know that at times, look, because we're all trying to move very fast and we're all understaffed. That means sometimes balls are dropped or, or communication is missed with critical communities that should be heard. And I, I guess I'm worried that we develop a pattern of dependency on other folks to go talk to our residents for us rather than strengthening the muscle internally so that in every key department that's public-facing, we know that's not true in every department. I'm not expecting, you know, IT or finance to do this, but clearly there are plenty of public financing, public facing departments to ensure that we're actually building that muscle internally. So that we have protocols in place and we have people in place that naturally orient us to be better at engaging our diverse community. Are any of these consultants likely to help us do that?
Mayor, Lori might also, but let me, let me have a comment, but let me start out. I, I believe it's a, personally, from experience on Downtown West and other intense community outreach and engagement efforts, it's a both and. So I think it's really important that city staff understand and be thoughtful and strategic and respectful about the communities that we're trying to reach out to. And I, I think we are learning. We, we brought on Lori in great part for the community engagement effort. She, she helped very much work in partnership with communities directly as well as bringing on consultants who would expand that reach. So it was definitely a hand-in-glove effort. And her skill set has supported efforts, for example, on the housing element, on other PD-related outreach efforts. So that we, we are doing both at the same time. We are building internally resources to understand the need and plan it out further because it's not a last-minute thing to do it well. And it does take more resources for, for council to invest in those efforts. So I do believe that some of the folks, for example, Ramey and Associates was one of the principal providers of outreach efforts and facilitation during the Downtown West engagement process and has already taught and will continue to teach those efforts best practice. So, so again, I, I think it is a both and with a recognition, just a fair recognition that, you know, as I believe Councilman Arenas says, if we're from the city, we may not be as trusted as from someone who's from a CBO or nonprofit in those areas. So just recognizing how to be most effective.
Thank you, appreciate that. And I think there's an invitation, Lori, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, I'll just say, when I started at the city four years ago, I was not a community engagement specialist. And I've gone through a bit of a boot camp in leading the Deardonn efforts. And I really see there's just a need for all kinds of resources, whether it's dedicated staff that can really learn community engagement and be that coordinator on behalf of the city and be that point person with the public. But our consultant teams just really bring a lot of value to the table. They are able to do a lot of the grunt work that actually enables staff to have more direct communication with the public. You know, if I had to spend all my time writing the meeting summaries and doing kind of the behind-the-scenes work, I wouldn't be able to call up our stationary advisory group members and develop that one-on-one relationship. So it's really a team effort and our consultants bring in a lot of ideas and experience from other cities and they teach us a lot. I really, I totally empathize with the sentiment of building our own muscles for this. And I do think consultants and CBO partners can teach us a lot and we can teach them, we can build capacity together. You know, we, we learned so much from the Ramey team in, in the Deardonn work. And, you know, part of the scope of services for this RFP that we just put out did include evaluation of process because being able to reflect on what went well and what didn't and what we can carry forward and what we shouldn't, needs to be more a part of our, our norm. And so one of the scope of services was to actually have evaluation capacity to be able to drill in on what are those metrics of success? And how do we know that we're, we're doing engagement as, as good as we can? So that's all part of the, the mix here.
And I, I just want to make sure that we don't miss the fact that we did hire CBOs and we did take our meetings to community meetings out in various areas where it's much easier to, to go to rather than coming to City Hall. So, so, and we're always learning how to do it better.
Thank you, Nancy Lee, I know you wanted to jump in.
Yes, I did, and, and really appreciate the conversation from everyone. And I did want to readdress some of the, the council discussion on, you know, what happened during the pandemic and would certainly agree with Councilmember Mahan and needing to broaden the tools and avenues we use and who we reach out to. It's, you know, we, we live in a very diverse city, which is great. And it requires a lot of different avenues and tools to reach our residents, which is good. You know, the direction that Councilmember Arenas you brought up, which is very important, the Promatoros and the resources that we've received around recovery, which is, you know, Rosalynn Huey and Rob Lloyd in our office, with Avalia Bailey and Carlos Velazquez, being able to have those resources to the mayor's point where we're building internal muscle and really practicing in the recovery effort. And, and not just for recovery, but we also view that in the manager's office is for the organization as well because it is a tool that we need to strengthen, flex and practice more often. So as part of that, and part of Rosalynn's work in the recovery effort is to build out a roadmap for us internally around community engagement and community outreach. So the departments have these tools, these resources. And part of that is going to be her first training with senior and executive staff in the city in October around civic engagement and some of the lessons learned from that recovery process so that departments can start moving in some of these directions. Because I do think, yes, it is a tool that we need to strengthen here, but it's also a very, I would say nimble and growing area that we need to be better as an organization on pivoting and being okay with practicing, you know, making some mistakes and moving on. So that is a body of work that we continue to do. And we're happy to report out on those efforts as we continue to learn.
Thanks, Lee. I appreciate everyone's responses here, and I think this is a case where, you know, nobody's wrong. Appreciate everyone saying. I'll just articulate two concerns that I think we may hear from the community down the road at some point. One concern is, hey, you've, you've got to go hire this consultant, what the hell are you guys for? Right, which is, I really want to go talk to the city. I want to talk to the council office, I want to talk to the director of X, I want to talk to the, the city that's implementing this, and I got this consultant, right? And so I, I think there's going to be, I, I think if we get too attached to one approach, that could be a problem. So I appreciate what's been said about the fact that there's learning because hopefully this is helping our organization to learn so that we are expanding our capacity and it doesn't become simply dependent on the consultant industrial complex. The, the second concern, just want to articulate is, and this is not meant to disparage any particular nonprofits because we know nonprofits are doing great work in our communities, are carrying extremely heavy burden in many instances. But we know occasionally that the lines can blur between the service work that nonprofits are doing and political activity or, or advocacy in different ways. And we expect nonprofits to advocate in lots of ways, that's part of their role, we get it. But because those lines can blur, it can also mean that there can be credibility issues about, well, it's this nonprofit, not that profit and nonprofit, and they have this perspective and they left out that community. And so I just want us to be really sensitive about the fact that we are the city. We are the ones who are supposed to be representing our community, first and foremost. And certainly we need the help of lots of community partners. And I think I really commend how staff have been open to that and, and try to experiment in different ways. But I just wanted, since they're kicking me out of here in a couple of months, I just want to offer a cautionary word that, that we can go too far down this path and it can become problematic. So anyway, leave it there. Councilman Jimenez?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, appreciate all the comments, I agree with much of what was said. Also, thanks to Councilmember Mahan for articulating some of the concerns that I had. I guess I have a one main question for Nancy, and that is, how, how, is it uncommon or, or is, how common is it, I don't see it too often, I guess, in which we see a breakdown of the results of the RFP? So I know that in the memo, there is a break, well, maybe one of the attachments to the memo, there's a breakdown of what the final scoring was, but I know there's different percentages allocated for different things, say diversity, inclusion, or whatever, that. that category was. Would it, you know, would you consider releasing or making known a little bit more detail as relates to the results of the RFP? Next time around or even, you know, related to this issuance?
Councilmember, thank you for the question. Certainly, our staff, Lori and I, or Lori can join you and walk through. There was some information describing high level report out, 23 applications, the number of folks who were, who met all the qualifications who were interviewed and those who actually are being recommended. So some of that information is definitely provided. And we, there isn't anything about the information that isn't public. And we also want to be mindful that if we were bringing every single score to council, there might be a lot of discussion that would bog down about why someone got a nine instead of a 10 on a particular section.
Right, yeah, I can, I can imagine that, that's a good point. I just, I guess I, I thought that as folks were posing their questions, it seemed to me that maybe having a little bit more of that detail, say for example, how X, you know, organization scored on the equity inclusion or, you know, things of that nature, right? Or the small business, you know? So say for example, if you can allocate, you know, 10, 10% of the score, did they score, did they get 5% there, did they get 3%? And so, I, I don't know, I, I just, I think based on what I heard that having a little bit more of that information may, I think, in my mind, help alleviate some of those concerns, how folks are scoring in certain areas. But anyhow, that was, I just wanted to express that, but thank you for all the work, I appreciate it.
Thank you. I see Councilmember Esparza, you have your hand up, is that from before?
Yeah, no, I, I raised it again.
Okay.
So I had a couple of questions and actually a statement as well is, I agree. I, I think that we, this, this is a muscle that we need to develop more as a city. And after two and a half years of COVID, where we've been stretched beyond all our limits, whether it's translations, whether it's getting out into neighborhoods that need it the most. Excuse me. We have relied on, or the census, we've relied on others to do that. And, and ultimately in our census, we brought in our own folks, our own city staff to go out into neighborhoods. But I'd like to add that it took a couple of council members to do that. It took Councilmember Carrasco and myself to jump up and down to get into what the issues were in the response rates in parts of our city that we missed and the county missed, right? And, and this is part of the equity discussion. When we brought it up in 2019 is, you know, and I'm gonna, I believe Councilmember Peralis and I were there that day at Rules. And, you know, most of my district is high needs. Right? So I'm asked to help on community outreach, on roads projects, on COVID census, you know, library concerns, right, a variety of things. And that's me and my staff. And so, yes, it is a muscle we need to learn on the city more. But it falls on districts like three, five and seven to go out and be more of that bridge. It puts enormous pressure on us to do that. And so why don't we develop our CBO nonprofits? Why don't we develop the partners that we work with and work more closely with them? We don't have to, the, the list before us is a menu. They can apply if, if we have some CBOs out there that are experts in graphics, go for it, go apply. I'm guessing that we'll have more on public outreach, on meeting facilitation, but who knows, right? And so, so I personally don't feel we have the staff at the city to do that. Maybe we should add that in the next budget if this outreach is so important to us as a city, that we add those staff to focus on outreach. But what we have before us is a contract to work with consultants and hopefully CBOs in October to do that work. I had a question on the training in October, excuse me, for senior staff. Can you talk a little bit more about that training and how that training will impact how, let's say DOT, does community outreach for transportation projects or how they plan their projects? Can you talk about that a little bit more, please?
Councilmember Esparza Lee Wilcox, Assistant City Manager. I can't speak specifically about DOT, but the direction that Rosalynn Huey has along with the recovery team is to take all the civic engagement that we had used in the emergency operations center and now part of the recovery task force and build out a more formal proposal and training regiment for senior executive and frontline staff about where we need to move to. So that is the direction that, and the, the direction that Jennifer and I have given. But how and what that training looks like, I don't know yet. But it will be occurring, I believe at the end of September or early October.
So my request for that would be because as much as I deeply respect all the folks on that team, I'm, I'm guessing that John Ristow isn't going to personally plan each project citywide, but, and I'm not picking on DOT, that's just an example. So that what we do is educate on how to plan for outreach. So for example, in this RFP, if we had wanted community leaders, maybe we reach out to them as soon as we open up the RFP. Right? How we work together on projects out in the community that we talk about how to partner with school districts, with the schools in our communities, with the faith groups in our communities. And knowing that each part of our city, you know, has its own unique flavor. But how to account for that in the planning stages? So that, you know, outreach doesn't become something that we sort of tack on at the very end, but we plan for it in the project. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Arenas, you also had your hand up, is that from before?
Yes, yes, mayor, I had my hand up again. This is a topic that, that is just absolutely important as you're hearing many of us who contributed during the many conversations around the pandemic and how communities were being impacted. And just living through that for two and a half years, I think is, this is the reason why I'm, you know, on the edge of my seat here thinking about how do we incorporate all of those lessons learned? So that we can have what we need for our community. And not only for, obviously for staff as well, we don't have the folks that we want on board, we don't have as many, we have some vacancy rates. And so we know that we need the support. But we, we also know that we, we need, we need to connect with our community in a meaningful way and not have it just be a check off. And so for me, I, I'd love to see this come back before it is, before the RFP is released or we can work on this offline. Because I, what I don't, what I want to avoid is having this conversation in October once again or in November. And that we are surprised with some of the results that we have, if we haven't, if there's any way that we can assist in building that for success, whether it's having those conversations with some of those partners that Councilmember Esparza was talking about or maybe just outlining some of the folks that, that typically get missed. I mean, you know, just having these, these conversations that we can build out the second half. Not, not only for our CBOs, but for what we have witnessed as an agency that is needed for our community. Because I'd, I'd love to see trainings, not, not just for executive staff, but, but I'd like an ongoing outreach training that is offered year round to all of our staff, including council, council staff. This is one of the major duties that we have is to connect with those, with folks. And, you know, most of our offices are four to five people. And so we have to be very effective in the way that we reach out to others. And so if, if there's ways that we also can improve and standards that we can set amongst not only our council staff, but among departments, that that's something else that we should, we should also be discussing. So, so anyways, I'm, I'm hoping that we can bring this back. Is there any way that we can bring this back before it gets solidified and released in October?
I, staff will definitely work on a strategy so that we can include review with the council. So that input, so there's clarity and that once the RF does go out, council member, that each office would have it so that you can extend to your networks as well.
That, that is wonderful. You know, I, I want this to succeed, I want you to succeed. I want our, our connection with our community to be stronger. I, I also agree with the, the mayor that we should be able to build our, our skillsets internally. But we can't do it all. So while we also develop our own skillsets or continue to develop our skillsets with the latest trends and, and best practices, that we also ask for help from the folks who are doing this out there. Because we're already relying on these, on these people. So I look forward to seeing what this, this next iteration of this looks like. And, and I just appreciate all the really good conversation that we've had so far.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Excuse me, mayor, and do I need to ask for friendly amendment to bring this back? Or is this something that could just be brought back?
We're happy, we're happy to bring it back without the direction.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. All right, any other comments? We have a motion, don't we?
Yes.
Let's vote.
Yes.
Peralis?
Yes.
Cohen?
Hi.
Carrasco? Davis?
Yes.
Esparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Lucardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to open forum.
I'm sorry, this is Carrasco, I.
Thank you. Okay, I have public speakers in person. The first one is Chris and then followed by Perry. So just come down to the microphone.
I'm happy to hear a few comments about outreach to the community. I'm from one of the communities. My name is Chris Bang and I'm a resident of the I'm aware of a project that our community is a little bit concerned about. At least the members of our community that I'm most closely associated with are quite concerned. And that is our knowledge of some type of a pattern now through the city that we are creating these poles along the bicycle lanes for supposedly protection of bicyclists. We have that ongoing in our community specifically along Branham Lane. And from what I've been able to determine, there are more significant negatives to these poles that guard these bicycle lanes than there are positives. I guess the positive is to protect the bicyclists. Well, I don't know what kind of protection they're going to get from these poles. The negatives are quite numerous. Safety becomes a big factor. And these poles that are anticipated create obstacles to the correct flow of traffic. And the negatives in the safety factor are too numerous to really elaborate. Along with the safety, of course, is the aesthetic value. I don't know if, how many of you have taken a look at this program that is along Hillsdale Avenue? But it's hard to describe. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It was a great discussion on the master agreements for community engagement consultants. I would like to add my comment that there is a subject called grant writers. So the mayor, all the 10 district members and the consultants, they should, you should develop a program for grant writers, for high school students, K-12, community college and San Jose State University freshmen. Grant writer program is a very, very important program so that the city, all the 10 districts can benefit from the consultants. Thank you.
Yes, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. I'm reading from a letter that was issued by Councilwoman Arenas, February 13th of 2021. Paul identifies and keeps tracks of issues that have perpetually suppressed our Latino communities such as land use. Past land use policies were racist, yet were systematically discriminated against people of color. There are issues that impact race that are more subtle and nuanced than say police supports. Paul's ability to identify these issues and integrate his perspective have allowed for our council to hear the result of systemic racism. Paul brings his experience growing up in a gang impacted area of San Jose, like many of us, to point out on how Chicanos are segregated and suppressed and tie it back to policy. He literally brings San Jose history to life. I am immensely grateful for his perspective and his knowledge of San Jose history. His advocacy has created opportunities for me as a council member to point out the ramifications of policies on Latino community. He obviously reads our council, our council and committee memos ahead of time as well as conducts his own research to provide very succinct commentary. That is the service that I provide to my community. I have never received $1 in five years. What I have received is three times getting locked up because of my advocacy. Now, I want to work with my city because I'm not going anywhere and I'm staying. Okay? I am an asset to my community. I am an asset to San Jose because I am her son. I am her son. Okay? That Fallon Statues removal is literally making California and San Jose history. Footnotes in books that have been written are going to have to be changed because of the work that I've done. I'd like to work with the city, but I need your cooperation. Thank you.
Hi, Wade Beekman, I hope you can hear me okay. I guess a thank you to Paul and his words and his work. Nice to hear what he had to say today. Also, a thank you to the first public speaker whose words reminded me of the importance that as we're building our future whose words reminded me of the importance that as we're building a future of community safety and bicycle safety and 5G issues, you know, and bridging the digital divide. As important as those things are, I think all of those things have to be able to work hand in hand in the future of what can be open public policies with technology and what are good practices as a full community effort. That's the way to define, help define our sustainability as a community in much better terms for our future, future of peace and open democracy that works not to harm each other. We have to really consider those goals and that's how we build our better future. So good luck in those efforts. A, a quick reminder, a, a good meeting yesterday on, on the future of gun issues, how to address the use of guns in the future of San Jose and what, what's around the use of guns in San Jose. Just a reminder, I really, really feel that there can be important public oversight from, you know, the community that's angry at the gun fees and things at this time. The public oversight they can provide just introduces a good way to be a full community process in our future. So good luck in how to, we can work towards those good efforts. And a final reminder again, that I really, really hope that all sides can want to negotiate a peace in the Ukraine area at this time. There is openings to do that. Let's find the ways to do that together and not.
Hi, I'm here to voice my concern about the proposed Noble EIH site. I want to echo what all my fellow neighbors have been saying, that this is not an appropriate location for an EIH. To strip the community members of established and loved parkland and build an EIH, EIH site across the street from two elementary schools would be a huge disservice. No other existing or proposed site has comparable issues. In addition, I plead with the council to increase the transparency in the search process. In the August 3rd Rules meeting, we were told that we would have an update by today. Yet we are now being told to wait until October 25th and we have not received any updates. I feel like we are still very much left in the dark. And meanwhile, we are here losing sleep over this. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Giovanni Medina. I just wanted to, you know, second, a voice, be another voice again for Paul from Horseshoe earlier. And then at that, I wanted to speak on, you know, my own behalf now and just, you know, I just, you know, I, I agree with like gun safety, but I just, I, I can't agree with picking on gun owners. I think that there has to be a way to get everybody involved and not just pick on responsible gun owners. It's infringing on our constitutional rights. That's all I got. Thank you.